Right.
Recording in progress.
Okay, it being six thirty, we call the meeting to order. This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being audio recorded and held remotely on Zoom and livestreamed on RCTV. We'll waive the reading of the Code of Conduct. We'll just ask any members, hi Pam. Any note, remote participants? But if anybody's participating, please state your name. So that we know who's speaking. So with that, let's move right into the agenda. Okay. So first, do we have any public comment today?
Rebecca, can you hear us?
Okay. While she's getting sorted out, why don't we take care of any reports? CAB report or liaisons? We don't have any liaisons here, but do we have a CAB report?
I'm sorry. It got hung up on the recording business. I'm here now. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Just address for the record.
Sure. Rebecca Lieberman, fifty Pratt Street. I just wanted to follow up on a letter I sent you about the proposal to give instant rebates at the time of purchase of efficient heat systems, appliances, and that kind of thing. And I sent two links in that letter to a main program where they give instant rebates at the time of purchase for efficient appliances. And they also have one for electric vehicles. And I just wanted to add one additional point to my letter, not to repeat what I said, because you can obviously read it, but this is also an equity issue, because the people who would most need to lower their electric bills for affordability are the ones who can least afford to buy things like induction stoves and efficient heating systems and things like that, because they cost a lot. So this would be a really good way. And also, it's, I would think it would be in RMLD's financial interest to encourage people to go for electric appliances instead of gas anyway, because every new gas stove purchase is not electric. So I just hope that we can get some movement there, because we really need to up our game in in reducing our emissions. I'm a member of the net zero group here, and we have a long way to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And we'll maybe we'll talk about that. And if there's anything to say, if the next meeting, we could address that. Yep, okay. That is great time. Thank you very much. So we'll go through and we now, thank you. We have with us Vinod Ragucci of Energy New England.
Do the minutes first?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, let's. Thank you.
Move the RMLD Board of Commissioners, approve the December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three open session meeting minutes, as presented on recommendation of the General Manager and the Great Board Secretary.
Wait a second.
All second.
Okay, Pam, seconds. Any discussion? No, all in favor? Thank you. Four oh, motion. Thank you very much. And thank you, Vin, Vinagurci. Please introduce yourself and explain who you are, what he and he is. We have a couple of new members, although one is is diving at the moment.
Sure.
And what you'll be talking about tonight. Thank you.
Sure. Vincent Ragucci. I'm a Reading Electric customer. Have been for twenty-five years. I live in North Reading. I'm with Energy New England, and we're the largest provider of wholesale services in New England to municipal light utilities. We also, so we purchase power predominantly, and you'll see in my slides, renewable power. We also provide all of the energy audits that are done in the communities. We provide electric vehicle programs for utilities all across New England. And some of the outside of public power things that we do. We're the energy advisors for the MBTA. We also for Boston Water and Sewer. We've also helped them to purchase fifty electric vehicles over the past couple of months. And make sure that they have the appropriate electrical services to provide for them.
And RMLD is a cooperative owner of Energy.
Yes.
And customer as well.
And customer.
Thank you. And you'll give a presentation.
Yes.
Please do. Thank you. So you can advance or I can advance for you.
Yeah, you want to?
When you're ready for the next slide. It was. Let's try again.
Is, as I said, we do this throughout New England, but any strategies? I lobby at the State House on behalf of thirty-one of the municipal utilities and one private client, First Light. And that's anything from what goes on at the State House, primarily in the telecommunications utilities and Energy Committee. But it does go into other committees as well with with energy issues. And also very heavily on the regulatory side. EEA, D O E R, DEP, and I'll talk a little bit more about those a little bit further on. Just to give you an idea of so far, we're in the beginning of year two of the two-year session. Pretty much everything has doubled. And the reason why is even though the the House and Senate combine a joint committee on TUE, they've been acting separate. Right from the beginning of the session, they weren't able to agree on a set of rules. So they decided to meet separately. So literally, we had doubled the amount of hearings this past year. Very challenging, especially with time at the State House and time monitoring what's going on. And both chairs, you know, wanted to hear the testimony and ask questions. So you couldn't just go to one and skip the other. So very challenging, but we were able to work our way through. Lots of one-on-one meetings with elected officials and lots of meetings with regulatory officials. So as most of you know, the last session, Senate Bill nine, which is now the climate law passed, setting the roadmap for fifty percent, seventy-five percent, and a hundred percent in in the last session. And I wanted to give you a quick peek at what ENE has been doing since the the passage of this. Next slide. So if you take a peek, it might be a little bit hard to read. But, you know, we we have put twelve new renewable projects from renewable resources online. Five hundred forty thousand, close to megawatt hours online to add to the one point two million megawatt hours we we've already had online between new hydro, solar, and wind resources. We're also looking at some creative ones. Right now, I'm working on actually regulations to change. Right now, you can't put floating solar on potable water. There's a committee at the regulatory level right now with EEA and DEP and D O E R to look at that. It offers a great opportunity to expand solar, where you don't have to take any trees down. You don't, you know, it's much easier for an installation. And at the time, I I've been looking at this since twenty eighteen with a couple of clients. At the time, there wasn't any installation anywhere in the world. Now there's thirty different projects, including major cities like London, that have it on their drinking water reservoir. So this could be a game changer, because they produce much more electricity, because they're cooler on the water. They have better reflectivity and the way that they're designed works better. So just another unique way to add to water supplies that are out there and, you know, taking a a small piece of that. Excellent.
On that point, is there, is what's needed to to change? Is it a regulatory? Is it a law?
Yeah, so no, it's it's funny. So Article ninety-seven would need to, which is, you know, what you can do or can't do on a water body. It's not a approved use. So right now, it would require the secretary's approval to do any type of project.
Of D O E R?
Yeah, of of EEA.
Okay, that's above.
Yes. And as well, there's no drinking water. So the drinking water people at the state level, you know, really want to make sure that there's checks and balances, you know, that not every, you know, this isn't for everyone to go do. You know, there's a lot of safeguards that are required to make sure that the installation is safe and and nothing goes wrong, because obviously, it's public water supply.
So also lakes that aren't water supplies.
Right. Non non potable, you could already do it right now.
As long as you don't have a boat.
No boat.
No boat.
So so one of the requirements that came out of the the climate, there were a lot of things in the climate law that have now forced their way forward. And I would say that the D O E R is very active at taking the pieces that said to implement by D O E R and getting them done. And one of them is to take an account of every large building in excess of twenty thousand square feet. And what they're trying to do is get a, you know, a hand on the larger buildings and trying to work, you know, work with them, once they get their accounting together on, you know, which fuel sources they have, what rates they're paying, to try to, you know, formulate that into future policy. So that's one of the things that we're working hand in hand with D O E R. We had a meeting on the twenty-sixth, and we're going to continue to work with the Commissioner and staff on implementation. This is something that does not apply to municipal light plants by law. But in a spirit of cooperation, you know, we're we're trying to figure out the best way for us to make that implementation happen. Bills on the move in in the session. These are two refiles from MEE and municipal light plants. Both of them deal with with mutual aid. I think they have, both have a terrific chance of passing the session. You know, one deals with assuring that linemen are, you know, when when they're working at either, I I know when, I don't know if Reading has gone to the tribal locations.
We did a lot of mutual aid at tribal.
So there's, once you're outside of your jurisdiction, that could mean just outside of the Reading territory, RMLD territory. Could mean another state, or it could mean one of the tribal territories, is to make sure that they they are treated insurance-wise, retirement-wise, the same way that they're treated working here. The other is to make sure that you can do services outside of the RMLD territory, and it will codify both of those. It's been favorable. There's been no opposition in any of the legislative hearings.
So the question I have is, you know, mutually has been going on forever. At this point, I mean, you know, when Worcester had that big ice storm back in the Worcester area. Reading was instrumental in getting crews out there. I mean, why why is it something different now? Did we miss something? Is something missed? Or is this just?
It isn't that it's different. It's that it's been questioned by one of the municipal light plant boards as to, and and it was regarding the the tribal visits. So they're going out of state to, you know, bringing, in some cases, bringing the equipment from the utility. And it it put up more questions than there were solid answers for. So they dealt with the state Retirement Board, the Insurance Board, and they made the decision that it was in everyone's best interest to file legislation. So that God forbid, somebody got seriously hurt and then denied coverage. Or, you know, worst case, passed away, you know, what happens? And and so that that burden doesn't come back and and that it's part of the insurance system.
This is more to do with going on tribal lanes, you're saying?
Tribal and and even outside, outside of the state.
Crews outside of state for years.
Yeah, but it sounds like some kind of insurance indemnification.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
But it doesn't state that. So it doesn't state you could do it, and it doesn't state that you're indemnified. This clarifies that.
Well, then, if it doesn't state either, what's the point of the legislation? Because that if it's going to cost you money for more insurance to go out of state, right, that threatens mutual aid. That's that, to me, that's a.
Oh, this won't change it. This will just allow it not to be questioned. Right now, if something happened, and and that was the hypothetical that was asked at the meeting with the Insurance Commission, was if this happened, and they didn't know how they would act on it. So rather than leave those questions out, it's in the best interest to protect the linemen and and file legislation. Last session, it was not admitted, because it was, there was a conference committee called, and both of the bills were filed late. And they didn't take any late bills into conference committee. So these were refiled on time, and I think will end up in the final.
And so way back in the history, because there was a big storm, crews actually went from RMLD to Guam. This this covers them to do that, too? Outside of the, we go to Guam?
Wherever they go. I know that, was it two years ago, they went to St. Thomas and St. John for, they weren't totally wiped out.
Yeah, we went to, during the hurricanes, our crews went to Florida. There were some crews that went to the islands. That's true. Not RMLD.
Okay, the other regulatory, as far as an update for what's going on, and as I said, it's it's been a busy year so far. The HER and HIER program. The HER is the Home Efficiency Rebate Program. The HIER is the Home Electrification and Appliance Rebate Program. You could see the the amount of dollars and what's allotted to municipal light plants. We've been meeting weekly with D O E R staff to make sure that the program parameters are set to things that that we can deal with. We we think that this will, you know, this should take place in the next two months. Because they're finalizing, we have another meeting next week with with staff at D O E R. The unassigned funding is with the HIER program. And in our meeting, upcoming meeting, we have with Commissioner Mahini, we'll we'll take, we'll be taking this up. Because we believe that some of those rebates should be going to municipal light plants as well.
Interesting, what the the public comment we just heard, that this could be something that could fit into that.
The.
The. The loan program, I've been working on that for four years. And pretty proud of the progress we made. And the the funding was the major issue. Now that we have federal dollars, they've made a commitment to put those dollars into a loan program. So you can see the almost two two million dollars that the DOE is provided, and then the D O E R is matching even more with eight point eight million. What, we've designed a program with Eastern Bank that mirrors the program with MassSave, so that you apply for a heat loan, and you'd be able to follow the same parameters. The monies from this will allow pay pay down of any interest, so that you would apply, get the the monies to do a heat pump, to do your insulation, all the all the things that are required. And and especially for people that have, whether it's propane or oil, that that want to switch over. It's it's a great opportunity for them.
Is this available to customers now, or do we need to wait for?
The program program has not yet been funded, so this is part of the discussions that we're having. And we're hoping to make an announcement as soon as we have a piece of paper that says it's gonna happen.
We've done a fair amount. A couple of the larger MLPs have done quite a bit of work with Vin at the ENE Group a couple of years ago to get set up, because it was imminent at that point in time, and then it had a couple of stumbles. So we're ready for this, and then we'll talk probably in the June, July about another program similar to this that would be additive to this as well.
Maybe it's too specific on this particular particular item. But is there any type of income qualifications that limit it? Because typically, MLPs are suburbs. Suburbs are going to have a much higher income than cities. So if, you know, this thing is limited to somebody who's under a hundred thousand dollars, this is it's a it's a nonstop program for municipal electric.
There's a ceiling to the income. So the the idea, and and this is being pushed very hard by D O E R, is the lower income has a higher chance or a first grab at the dollars.
Yeah, but it just, I guess that lower income, understanding where you're applying this money, whatever that ceiling is, I think it has to be relative to to mean average incomes to to a lot of people, because there's a lot of homes in suburbs that do not have insulation still. They're just, you know, under fifty, eighty-year-old homes. So I think that's a big element of this bill, because I I don't think it'd be, it possibly could start not not be utilized.
This has become, that's a great point. I mean, like, how do we get it that we can get our houses insulated and get this applying to more people? I mean, is there, what, is there a tweak that we need to suggest to not have such strict income limits so that more people can use this?
So again, this is what we're fighting for right now, is, you know, make it available to everyone. But make a priority on how how many, how many will be allotted for each year. And prioritizing the folks that need help in getting this. You know, it's sort of like giving people that were buying a Tesla anyway, a rebate that they didn't need. I mean, everyone will take the money, but I, you know, we'd much rather see people that need it true get the services.
As mentioned, well, as this becomes more real and tangible, again, Vin and the team's been working on it for a while. We'll give you guys an update, but also, we've got queued up, as I mentioned earlier, a broader update on the overall incentive program. And we'll talk about a loan program that that the IRG team is working on as well.
So the, in your package, you saw a a letter from MEE to to the Commonwealth DEP. The, they have put a proposed heat standard, put a draft framework together. And in a lot of cases, it does not apply to municipal light plants, and that was pretty much laid out in the in the letter that was submitted to to DEP. That said, you know, in the meeting, we said we want, you know, we as MLPs want to be helpful. You know, want to do what, you know, continue doing what we're doing to decarbonize and electrify and do the right things. But, you know, some of the, and and I'll just bring up some of the things that were in that letter. The RPS, the APS, the CPS, the CES, all don't apply to municipal light plants, yet it refers to that in the draft framework of the regulations. So what it what it in essence would be doing is setting up a, okay, just for argument's sake, Reading needs to put five hundred heat pumps in a year, or you'll you'll have to hit this penalty. Well, that subverts the the powers that you have as a board to set rates. So, you know, that's one of the arguments that we're making, you know, with with the folks. At the end of the day, we're we're trying to work together. We obviously want, and and I'm one of the beneficiaries of installing a heat pump and and using the rebate. I think everyone should. You know, compared to the volatility of gas. I know what my, I know what my rate is, and Greg and his team have actually shown me that I could do better if I went on a time-of-use rate. They proved it.
I still haven't done it yet, but.
There we go.
That's a negotiation at home. You try to tell your wife what time she can do the law, because I would be crazy if that happened, but we do it just so, again, we've got a pretty, we have one of the more active air source heat pump programs among the MLPs. So we're going to continue doing what we're doing, but we're trying to keep an eye on this to make sure that for some reason, we don't get backhanded.
Yeah, you don't want to do something positive and then turn it on to negative, because what's the, then you'll rescind it.
Well, I mean, we, yeah, so.
RMLD is in a great spot, because the way that even the draft rules were written, you would get credit for what's already been installed, and you've had an ongoing program. Again, I think their intent is to get to the the folks that haven't, there are some MLPs that don't offer any rebates for heat pumps, and that's discouraging. So I I think we'll find a happy medium, and we'll be able to work together to, you know, help them achieve the goals. Also, wanted to let you know that, as I said, in addition to what we do for municipal light plants, we're we're using our expertise, for instance, in electric vehicles. You know, we we proposed to the mass DOT, and we were selected to help them set up the statewide NEVI program for locations of fast chargers throughout the Commonwealth. The law requires that they're installed every fifty miles. And part of our interview, we we talked about the fact that, you know, don't overlook the value of municipal light plants, because the rates are so much lower. And residents would benefit from charging in MLP areas, and the state likes that. So we've been working with them on that and and obviously trying to increase their the success of their program. Also, that's my boss, John Zimmerangus. We were able to get John appointed to the the Commission for Clean Energy Infrastructure Siting and Permitting. And they had completed fourteen meetings since he was sworn in in September, a very active commission. There were twenty-eight members from all sectors, including John, that represented public power and the utility sector. He was there with grid and ever-source representatives from that sector. And the recommendations of that commission to, and and basically, it was set up to expedite permitting that, you know, typically, in some cases, could take up to ten years to get a a project through, or speeding up interconnections and, you know, things like that. Recommendations are sitting on the governor's desk, and we're waiting for bill to be filed. Hopefully, that will, timing-wise, work with, you know, the end of session. Mentioned the transformer issue. Recently, the the U S DOE Secretary Granholm, she testified our education, you know, when when General Manager Phipps goes down to DC and and we're meeting with the delegation, we're meeting with folks from D O E, and letting them know about problems like getting transformers. Finally, the information that we provided, the the survey that we did of all the municipal light plants and. Finally, the information that we provided, the, the survey that we did of all the municipal light plants and how long the lead times were, we gave them factual information and they listened. So there's, there's two issues with this. One is the, the efficiency that's supposed to increase. It was supposed to happen this year. They've now put a two year delay on it. That's going to help us because now you'll be able to take delivery and get between now and twenty twenty seven, whatever transformers you have, you'll be able to use those in the systems. And then see what they do after that for, for getting, you know, for, for getting transformers. Hopefully by that time, the, you know, the, the, the supply chain is caught up with the demand.
Can you ever just explain for the people in the chief seats like me, what, what the efficiency gain can be from a traditional transformer versus the new generation? How, yeah, sure.
So transformers now are in the ninety nine point one, ninety nine point two percent efficiency range. And this proposal going to ninety nine point three to ninety nine point four.
Be kidding me.
And the reason they're in this is that way back when they were, so this was part of a broader package to primarily drive efficiency of appliances. And transformers were included in the list of appliances. So there's been a lot of improvement in appliances, but we're, transformers were already inherently. So that's part of the reason why either, either pull, pull transformers out of it. Or, I mean, make, make some adjustments for it.
Literally.
And we're already, we're already two nine, I mean, we're already ninety nine point one, so it's, it's.
Two decimals out.
And, and the issue to transition requires a different core material, which is much more expensive. So it will only for, for minuscule efficiency improvement of an already very efficient piece of equipment, it will significantly increase the cost. So this is worth, I mean, we, I thought it was much more than that. Nope.
So expectations for, you know, between now and the end of the legislative session. Good news, the House and the Senate are talking to each other. That's great because it also means that things will hopefully come back to normal. Because they do have to meet and they do have to pass in each body for the bill to become a law. I expect the same that's happened in the past four sessions, some type of an omnibus bill to be created. They'll probably look for more offshore wind and, and a future procurement in that. More, more climate type of pieces will be attached to that. And other pieces regarding electrification. There'll, there'll probably be more funding or, or at least the equivalent amount of funding for electric vehicles that we've seen in the past. And, and then also looking for both DOER and DEP to continue with their regulatory rollouts. And their goals are by the beginning of twenty twenty five to have these regulations out and, and, and become rules. And again, thank you for, for being a, a client for this long and, and also being my utility.
Anybody have any questions for, for Vin?
Just a question, is this a particularly active or inactive for those who are new? Is this a typical kind of, besides meetings, which I understand were very heavy given the circumstances? The types of bills that we're seeing go through, is this, is it increased because of the IRA? Is it about the same? Do we expect more to come in the future?
Yeah, it's a great question. Because you would expect with all the funds that more activity would happen. The, the the state from, from the DOER, their budget, EEA had one percent increases. It's the first time, and, and this is the second year that it's been approved, at least in the governor's budget. Last year it was approved and, and they're spending it. They have been much more thoughtful at putting bills in that would do all kinds of things. Getting, creating programs to encourage electrification, getting dollars back to homeowners. I would say maybe ten or fifteen percent increase in, in those type of bills. And then a lot of, you know, there, there's still a lot of folks that don't understand the complications of upgrading the electrical system. The, the transformer, you know, the transformer issue. You know, what you do with your own system, the upgrades to distribution system, substation. New substations that are needed for power. Transmission that needs to be upgraded. And yet, I would say there were close to a hundred bills that had something to bring back the twenty fifty into twenty forty five or twenty forty. It's great to want to, you know, achieve goals quicker. But at the same time, the system's just not built for it right now.
To, to continue on Pam, that, that, I hope that, that messaging comes from ENE as much as possible. Because, you know, we're looking at a tenfold increase, but you want a hundred percent of renewable, you know, or a ten, you know. It, it's a logarithmically, if I can say that, you know, we have to get there and how we get there in, in a responsible manner that doesn't put our network in jeopardy. And I think that, that's the fear, people that work in this business, that legislatively we're pushing ourselves to a brink for, but, you know, it's, it's, it's not good news to be out of power in New England in the winter. Right? And I, I, I hope that ENE is a strong voice that tells people, educates people that, yeah, we all want, go green, we all do, but it has to come in a, in a responsible manner.
It's the majority of my meetings. And I, I, I have to say, because they're both on the telecommunications utilities and energy committee, Senator Tarr and Representative Jones. As well, actually, the Vice Chair is also a Reddick representative, Representative Hagerty. They do a tremendous job. And, you know, I, I get calls when they get, so regulatory changes, it's interesting. The regulators do their thing, they make a draft regulation, it becomes final, but it still needs legislative approval. And I get a call every time there's a new proposed regulatory change to ask if it negatively impacts public power. So they're willing to do whatever it is to, to help us out and, but they're proactive instead of reactive. It's, it's way in advance of, you know, hey, this is coming or when we change the green communities to allow, you know, communities like Reading to apply in their own. Same thing, they wanted to make sure that the regulations that match the change in law were agreeable with us. So we're, we're lucky to have such a great delegation.
And we're being more proactive again with help from, from Vin and the group. Us as an MLP, like specifically me as the GM, we've done a lot of presentations over the past six months. So I, they know that we're trying to do the right thing, we're trying to be supportive, we're trying to be very proactive. And we have a history, many of them mentioned that we have a history of being innovative and, and thinking out of the box. So it's also helpful.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so two quick questions that we, I briefly flagged before the meeting is, what's your best guess of what load growth will be in five years or ten years?
Well, Greg has a better idea than I do. I, I think it's anyone's guess on, on load growth. I, I think you have indicators, you have a pretty solid number, for instance, of it, it's funny, you put a program in place, you offer dollars to help people put in things like heat pumps. And it's a great indicator of, you, you know what that puts on the load and the work that puts on the system. And it lets you put those upgrades in, you know, you know, the addresses, it, it's a great program. I'm, you know, unlike electric vehicles, which you have a program, but the people, it, it's up to people to be proactive to sign up and let you know that they're going here rather than you finding out.
That's where we're going. That'll be one of the discussions we have in the June, July discussion, we're going to change the EV program.
So it sounds like ten percent is your prediction.
Well, I, I I would, if I had a guess, I'd, I'd say close to that in five or ten years. I would say five years. I think, you know, the incentives and the programs are going to be for the people who are early in. And I think a lot of people in the demographics in our MLD, you know, I, I don't think some of the other MLPs meet the demographics, but I, I think here, you know, you have a solid track record of you put programs in place and people, you know, take advantage of it.
And then the other question that, that I briefly touched on before the meeting is, so this is going to cost us a lot to build new facilities and build our system. And then part of mitigating that can be the demand side management. So is there anything in the agenda where they, whether now or in the future, we could be thinking about in terms of what do we promote in Boston to advance demand side management to the same scale of what we're looking at in terms of load growth?
No, I, I, I think one of the things that I, I know that Greg has talked to Veer, for instance. There are companies that have new technologies that I think if our MLD is willing to pilot, that there's opportunities to, to get some funding to, to look at doing projects like that. That, you know, doing something like that that potentially increases the, the capacity of, of the lines by fifteen percent. You know, is, when you look at cost benefit, it's, it's huge.
A whole bunch of lots of different.
Yeah, but there's, I, I guess my advice is the state doesn't have a lot of new programs. And just like the utilities put three year plans to the, you know, to the DPU, we don't have to. But I, I think in similar fashion, if we put ideas in front of DOER or DEP and we can have the conversations, I mean, Greg's had a number of those conversations with staff. They're willing to listen.
Electric water heaters. We, some utilities that we used to have, you know, timers and that we controlled. I mean, I don't know if there's a opportunity there, stay wide or. Just food for thought. Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ben. So number five is one that we actually want to, well, you, why don't you lead it up?
I'll do kind of a quick update and then you can, yeah, I'll do a quick update. Right, so it, many of us, well, so over the past couple of decades, the town of Reading has an interest in the area around our campus and potentially our campus as well. And over the past couple of years, we've participated in hosting events here. Also, we've met collectively, a subset of our group, of our commissioners have met with the select board just in terms of how to move the ball forward. So there's been work that we've been doing behind the scenes. I'll walk through that in just a second towards where we are. But as you guys know, we, we are open to, to reconfiguring our campus. We need to do something, we're going to outgrow the capabilities of, of this site. We've got building maintenance to do, we're doing some maintenance right now, but we need some more significant rebuild or major renovation. It, anyways, I won't go into the details, you can read the slides a little bit later. Obviously Station One, which is in the center of our campus. Fun fact, right, it was, it was operational in eighteen ninety six. It was actually a generation plant through nineteen twenty four, literally a hundred years ago. At that point in time, it was a coal, coal fired plant. I think you guys all know that where we are sitting right now is a turnstile for the trains to drop coal into the plant. But it was decommissioned in nineteen twenty four because load outstripped the capability of that plant. So since, so we used to be in the generation business, but anyways, more details on Station One. It's a historic building, it's, it's got a whole bunch of, it needs a lot of investment before reuse, et cetera. So we, and the, and the other element, that very, very last bullet, so last fall, I had a chance to meet with the owners of the other three property owners that are on this particular property. There's three, there's, there's multiple buildings, but there's three owners. All three of them are open to selling or some, or reconfiguring of the campus. Two of them are open to sell, the third one would like to stay here, but are open to be moving somewhere else. So we've got flexibility in our little area right here. But big picture, the, the town and between our office, our MLD and the town planning office, we've been working over the past six plus months trying to make progress. They actually applied for, with support from us for a grant for a hundred thousand dollars. It is, it is, if I go to, to this chart, this from it on the right hand side, well, actually I'm going to go back, run probably bigger picture. It would include the area on the other side of the tracks. So they're, they're looking at this broader eastern gateway development, we're only a piece of it. There's work, so we are only part of a bigger puzzle. We are not fully aligned yet in terms of goals. Again, we're very supportive, but we've got to run on operations. And more important, not more importantly, but equally importantly, we support four towns, of which Reading is less than thirty percent of our total loads. So we have to think about it a little bit differently, but we're, we want to collaborate and make progress. You'll see, I'll let Dave talk a little bit about in terms of next steps, but we're, we are open to contribute what we want to propose and approve formally, but to contribute a portion to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense to do area concepts, provide area concepts to dust off some of the stuff that's already been done. But because this is bigger than us, the conclusion was, let's let the talent drive this, we'll be a contributor to it. There's a particular process we have to work through. There's an MOU that the town council drafted, our council has reviewed. I will share that between us in the next meeting. At the end of the day, just big picture, this is a milestone that we had presented a year ago, the clock is ticking. Our goal is to basically be reconfigured by the end of the decade. Now, the end of the decade is only six years away. That seems like a long time, but for doing any sort of construction, the clock's ticking fast. So we want to, we've, we've done the first couple of items, you know, the outside event. But we're trying to get the concepts done this year, confirm what we want to do with the partners. We're open to actually purchasing, you know, buying out the partners behind us. We had talked about potentially moving somewhere else. There's really no place else in Reading to go. Right now, legislation doesn't really allow us to relocate in any one of the other towns. That's a whole nother topic that we'll talk about with, with the ENE in terms of making the flexibility to do that. But anyways, just quick update, we need to keep this ball moving forward, we've made some progress. We'll talk a little bit more detail with the town at a subsequent meeting in a week or two. That's a quick update. Yeah, go ahead.
So obviously the clock is ticking, how much time do we expect the town to take to do the study? These are two separate paths essentially.
Nope.
About, right?
No, no, the idea, so we base, so the town wants to, so what we concluded is that the next step would be to, so big picture, it would be to do some concepts.
Because this, I'm sorry, is this concept just our MLD?
No.
Oh, this is the full.
We are, we are a smaller portion of a larger concept. We are important for a whole bunch of geographic reasons. We are an important piece of the puzzle, very important piece of the puzzle. And we want to, we want to be part of the solution, not a stick, you know, so, so anyways, but it's a, it's a town issue more. I mean, it's a, it's important to us, but it's a bigger town issue, which is why we need to make sure we align the goals and objectives, et cetera. But the next step would be to create some concepts, so we're willing to contribute to that, but not totally funded because it's, you know, for two reasons, one, it's more than us, it's the whole region, it's, it's on both sides of the MBTA tracks. And the fact that we have a constituency that's broader than just the town of Reading. So the next step would be for that study to get done, it's got to go through an RP process before they do the RP process, they have to make sure of the funds. Same thing that we sometimes have to do with RFQ type stuff, RFPs. So we, we need, in the next couple of weeks, need to make a formal decision. So I'll send some additional information, but I wanted to give you a heads up that it's, it's, it continues to have motion. Go ahead.
Sorry, I have one question. If you go back to that first slide, you go back to that first slide.
Yes, sir.
Go back two slides.
That's the first.
That's up there, okay.
Yes, that's, that's the, that's the.
Is the plan to connect this and property, this, the, the new crossing road comes across and connects? Is the plan to come across and connect to that? At which point would we close off these entrances on Ash Street?
So I, I have an answer to that, which is that there's not any one plan at the, at this point.
But you know, we're saying it's going to be looking at both sides. I mean, I would hope that we consider that to kind of just close off the Ash Street side.
So I spoke, I spoke with Andrew Mcnickel today and, and this is really exciting, not, not. So I spoke, I spoke with Andrew Mcnickel today, and and this is really exciting, not not because if you walk from here at a market basket, you know, things haven't changed since nineteen fifty, basically. You know, it's, it's, this is exciting to get this part of the town revitalized.
Right.
And so the first step is the town, Andrew wants to issue the RFP for the town side in May. And, you know, we want to contribute to it for our purposes and also for the greater, you know, the greater good of this whole area and see what these moving parts can be. So since we don't have the M O U in front of us, and I don't think we've seen the draft RFP. Well, since Greg mentioned before the meeting, we, he needs to have an executive session on another topic in, in before the May meeting, we'll have a quick short meeting in like two weeks. We can deal with. I know. Well, we, we really will. It'll be a one item to to do this and then vote on the fifty grand that that would be our contribution and then the executive session on another topic that Greg wants.
It's just, it's just something I'd like to consider that, you know, cut these, you've got these pathways on.
And so in, and in the, and in the, we, that's something we can talk about, and I'd like to have Andrew come to the meeting in two weeks and like talk a little bit about it, ask that question. And but I think it's very exciting to to do this for ourselves and for the downtown of Reading.
I mean, to buy those three buildings up back, what are, you got any idea what that would cost?
I do. I won't share that right now, but I do.
Okay.
It's single billion of dollars.
Okay.
It's, it's doable.
It's a seven figure number, period.
Oh, it's definitely a seven figure number. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Leave it at that. We'll leave it at that.
It's a seven, yeah.
Mine is not eight.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Just quick, for, for, we do not own the entire campus. We own a portion.
That's great. There's a whole, that's a whole nother set of issues as well.
If you. We own a piece, private ownership. So this multi, multi. It's a, it's a puzzle. It's a puzzle. One owner, so it makes it complicated.
Yeah, even the site, so it's complicated, but do, all doable. Right, so. There's no, right now, there's no conflict with the town on this. We jointly would like to move the ball forward. They have a goal and we have a goal and they can be aligned. So and it, and we have, you know. There's been attempts to pursue this. We're now the catalyst because we need to do some some decisions on our end and the pain point with the town does will influence what we do.
You know, the town is also catalyst because between Market Basket and Main Street is is a zone that the town wants to.
Exactly.
It's, it's.
Exactly.
And it all can be done of a piece and it's, so.
If you go into that from that, you know, go past the wall, you come into that that area. The building you look right ahead, that's vacant, been vacant for a long time.
So this.
Yeah.
A whole bunch of scenarios.
So we'll have a meeting in about two weeks. We'll have Andrew here, hopefully, to get more detail.
So that's that one. Quickly, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, quick update. So I'm sorry, you want to introduce?
Oh, no, you, you go ahead.
Then item six.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm gonna just, my apologies for not being more specific at the discussion we had last meeting. I'm committed to just giving you guys a quick summary. I will walk through this fairly quickly. But what I think the appropriate thing to do is at the intermediate meeting during the executive summary, because there's a lot of details that we would like to share. We'll do that the executive session. So I'll just quickly, quick summary, one, two, three, and then we'll, we'll save the meat of it for the subsequent meeting. So, so real quick, context, right? We've got momentum. We need, we need to keep moving forward on some solution relative to both in territory generation and in territory storage. The storage thing continues to move forward. I put this slide in the lower right hand corner, the right hand corner. This is a presentation that came out of last year's NEPA meeting. At the end of the day, the context really hasn't improved, right? The challenges are still in front of us. Bob mentioned some of the the challenges that continue to be in front of us. We're in a, the whole region is in a transition mode and specifically Massachusetts due to the twenty twenty one climate bill. As Vin mentioned, right, that top item, the Commonwealth, from the legislative and regulatory perspective, the goals and the laws. We continue to ask this question, you know, Vin pursues this as well. They're unlikely to soften. So they're going to be where they are or they might intensify. And you mentioned, you mentioned in the meeting that there's a lot of pressure to intensify, which means to to shorten the window. So regular, the regulatory and legislative environment is what's, is what the catalyst was back in twenty twenty one to drive the change that we're feeling now. Now, there are things happening on our, on a federal level as well, but that's a, that's a that's the catalyst. So the question is, can that change back and soften? That's why we always ask that question over and over again. As a result of that, you know, we talked about before, the past, the past six months, we continue to update the load forecast. But it's, you know, it's two X by twenty fifty. Is it, is it ninety percent larger, a hundred and ten percent larger? I don't know, right? You know, nobody can predict the future that well, but it is. You know, it's going to grow at two to two and a half to three percent per year, which over ten to fifteen, twenty years becomes two X. So that's credible. And as we mentioned before, it matches the ISO New England's forecast as well. We'll, we will, you know, the wave in twenty twenty to twenty twelve through twenty twenty, which was the major efficiency of replacing incandescent lights. Lights used to be twenty eight percent of the total energy load. They're now less than eight. So there's no other major opportunities in terms of equipment changes you can do. There's a lot of small stuff and we'll continue to provide incentives for those. But the, the, you know, what the comments that you guys have been prompting us in terms of the demand side, whether it's time shifting or or reducing total load, that's the next wave. It's not a big wave, but we're going to continue to chase that. Wholesale cost, I'm going to run through these real quickly because the context is important. Wholesale cost, in fact, we had another discussion this afternoon with the, with some external people, including the E and E team, but the, the wholesale costs are continued, a combination of capacity, transmission certificates and energy. You combine all those, it's roughly a four percent compound annual growth rate. That's a big number. And so everything we do is in the context of, that's everything we do. Remember our, our mission, reliable, low cost, non carbon? We're trying to do a lot of pieces to minimize the impact of that four percent. We've said pretty clearly that energy bills will increase, but that next bullet in there is really important, and we will put a little bit more detail behind this, and it's going to become part of our education program. Our view is that total energy spend will be, we believe it to be likely less. So a port, a larger portion, as people go from to electrify or go to fully electrified homes. Some of the initial analysis, it could be as little as half of what they're spending today in terms of total energy spend. Where total energy spend is a combination of electricity, gasoline or diesel for their vehicle and oil. So we're running that analysis, but that becomes very important for people to understand net energy spend. So we, before we make that public, we're going to continue to push on that. It's really important. In territory assets, check all three boxes. We, we're doing a lot of work with partners and vendors, you know, as, as we've kind of, as I've shared with some of you individually. There's a lot of work that we do behind the scenes to pursue and chase and encourage vendors to be interested in us. We've, we've created a lot of interest. Last meeting, we talked about two specific projects. They're interested because they want to have reference accounts. We're, we're close. We're, we become a good reference account. So there's, in fact. So early discounts, but those early discounts will disappear after it's become more commonplace. So we want to be very careful not being the bleeding edge, but want to be the leading edge in terms of being innovative. The new asset funding sources, this is the IRA twenty two. Eventually, those funds will dry up. While they're supposed to go out to twenty thirty. We're not going to wait until twenty twenty nine to take access to those grant opportunities, investment tax credits, et cetera. In fact, on this particular project, I was made aware that the I T C, the tax credit for fuel cells actually expires at the end of this year. So part of the reason for us to, to either, you know, decide what we're going to do sooner than later is the clock's ticking. We recognize based on the meetings that we've had with, with the regulators, et cetera. The Commonwealth is cautious on new long term fossil fuel projects. So we take that into consideration. And then the last element there, natural gas will have a reduced role within ISO New England, but it's not going to zero. We talked about power supply. The, the key message of these next two slides is that in territory generation and in territory storage are part of a larger risk management strategy, right? Keep in mind that the mission, keep the lights on. It's all about risk management. There's a bunch of elements. I won't bother walking through those elements in the lower portion of that. But we look at all of the different projects and the portfolio reflects that if something doesn't work in one piece, we don't shoot ourselves in the foot, not all eggs in one basket. The key piece is that in territory is a smaller piece. The project that we're talking about right now is less than eighteen percent of our total spend, or we know total power supply today. And as load goes up, it'll get smaller. Last, yeah, just second to last slide, back to the other alarms we're doing, right? We watch, like today was a good example, like literally each week, we're looking at hours, you know, forward price curves, et cetera. We, you guys know, we have a passion, like you guys know, we have a passion for power supply. We just think it's the coolest thing ever. But we look at that always and try and find new opportunities. And we've been very aggressive. Some of the projects we do with the E and E, some of the projects we do ourselves. We've already talked about, we're doing more storage, significant storage. The project we talked about last week, the ten megawatt hundred hours system, there's a unique opportunity for us to be aggressive in that. That actually came out of the NEPA twenty twenty two meeting. There was a presentation that that vendor made at that meeting. I went up and met afterwards and then for literally for ten months, we pursued them to engage them to get more detailed discussions. So that's, that's an example of us being aggressive. We've already laid out plans to add thirty more megawatts of in territory generation. By the way, the Linfield Water Project. So we're, we've got meetings next week and then on May sixth. We'll have to do some approvals for you guys. We, we talked about putting in the budget item in at the last meeting. But as that gains some traction down the road, we're going to do that as well. I told you before, Maple Meadows is still active. We're trying to do title clearance. So we're doing as much PV as we possibly can, but we're going to max out at four times the size we are right now, or at ten megawatts. There'll be no more. The, you'll hear about in brief in a few minutes, but the AM, IM, DM just piece is another part of it. So these, these are all different pieces that are designed to manage the risk of our power supply portfolio. The, the last piece, because we, I think the biggest issue we had last week was understanding risk. We'll get into more details. We basically looked at the carbon capture fuel cell, four major blocks of risk. And we'll talk about this in more detail, but there's financial, fuel supply, technology, and what I called external opinion, right? We do care. I mean, we're here to serve our customers. We care about their opinion. But if you're not, if you don't play these, if you don't position these right, they can and we talked about last week, we don't want to have another wood burning bio fiasco in front of us. So we'll be very careful in terms of how we do this and cautious. But we're, so we'll all walk you through more details here, but we, I think we have done a very good job in terms of managing the risk in all these categories. We'll talk about them in more detail in executive session. This, we can be happy to do for public, but it makes sense for us to look seriously at an in territory generation project in addition to the in territory storage. So I'll, I'll leave it there unless you guys have any additional questions. There's a lot of stuff in these slides. I would encourage you to take a look at them. I'll probably bring them back as a starting point for our executive session. And then we can get into the detail elements, particularly of the financials, the CO two pro portfolio, the key things that I think are important for all of us. Questions? Yeah.
I, I like the term net energy spend. When you're talking about a customer, right?
Oh, back on this one?
You, you're talking about everything, but I think that that's a cautionary thing because you're talking about their total consumption.
Correct.
People care about their bill. They do not care about their total consumption. But when you start talking about gas and other things that are spent on their electric bill, so I, I, that would require a significant amount of education and I.
Agree completely.
And, and that, so I, it's, it's a rest in concept, but.
Oh, more than a concept. It's not us. We're, we're, we're not the, we're not the spearheading that one.
No, no, I know, but it, it's, 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 it's something that I, I to introduce that concept when we're talking about your bill, I think we have to, that's a very fine, you have your bill in front of you and then there's other things. So I, I, I just think that.
Yeah, well, well.
Be careful. It's, it's, but.
So exactly, right, so. At the end of the day, people care a lot about, I mean, they care about all the dollars they spend, right? And so, you know, as you look at, again. You know, we don't take the political positioning on, on any of this stuff. It's like, what are the rules and how do we, how do we fulfill the core mission? Keep the lights on, make the bills affordable and be compliant. So we're going to continue to do that. But if you look at the total cost of electrification, electrification is going to end up being less, so literally, we've done initial analysis. It's less expensive total energy spend. How we position it's going to be very important. That's why this is, this is introducing the concept right now. But it's going to be part of the bigger package. And we're trying to leverage things that are being done on, at the Commonwealth level, you know, back to, again. Our goal is to educate the customers. We're going to, we're going to provide the incentives. It's up to them to make the decisions in terms of how they're going to vote with their pocketbooks. We aren't going to force them, but we're going to encourage them.
I, I just, I would like to just jump ahead to one item that's related to.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just because I.
You want to go down to?
Yeah, on item twelve, you know, we, at, at one time, we would have committees that would take a deep dive on.
All of them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, certain items, excuse me, item eleven.
Yep.
And it, it seemed like a good time to perhaps reinstate a committee. There used to be one called Power and Rate where power supply contracts would be looked at and recommended up to the full board, that this might be a good time.
Which we do do still.
Right, right, but we don't have a committee.
Correct, yeah, we do, we go direct, yeah.
And I know it's good to also not have too many committees, but so much is going on and it's all very exciting stuff that is probably I think a good time to have another one. So I would like to form such a subcommittee or a committee that we could call like the Strategic Power Solutions and Load Management Committee to look at all of this. And with the basic goal, all of the, the committee could could decide what its own scope is, but to recommend, review and recommend this and other proposals for in territory generation with all the pros and cons. Also look for and recommend up best in class demand side management and efficiency measures to limit the need for these expenditures. Again, making recommendations up. Potentially review and recommend procurement design. And finally, recommend any necessary local or state policy changes and, you know, Vin's expertise would be, you know, appreciated with, as part of that, you know, what can we help with? So I'd like to form this committee and ask if, if Pam, a Bob could, could serve on it and, and then like Vivek from the cab. So I would like to do that. I think that's something I can do as chair.
You propose that, absolutely. So then.
Let me ask, this is going to, this is going to slow the department down.
Well, I don't, I don't think so. I think.
I'm asking the department, not asking you. I'm asking, I'm asking.
Well, why don't I tell you what I'm proposing first and, and we have monthly meetings. We only meet every month. And this is something where we can, we, it, 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 I don't think it would, but yeah, Greg can tell me if it slows it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see. So at the end of the day, you know, one of the things we've learned over the past couple of months is how do we figure out a better mechanism to educate the whole, both the C A B and the B O C? And so I'm going to, I'm going to work on some elements to do that. There's also some significantly, significantly new strategic pieces that we're looking at in territory generation and in territory storage. In territory storage is pretty much in, that's in play, like we're executing that now. We, we talked about that last year and the year before. I think power supply by itself, contracts, we, our power supply portfolio is well managed in a good shape. I think of the focus of the group is to look at things like, you know, carbon capture fuel cell. I, I'm open to the support and the additional help to look at that piece. I don't think we need to do it for power supply itself, because I think we do a really good job. I mean, really, I think we do a good job. But this new crazy stuff. You know, I, again, if it, if it comes to slow us down, then we'll re, then we'll regroup. So I think for, for, for in territory gen, I'm open to the help and the input.
I'll just say, I think, thinking about the title of the, the committee and the focus on solutions, you know, thinking ahead to what are those solutions that are going to help solve? I think what you're probably hearing is the support for additional, like you said, education and momentum on getting those solutions vetted and, and getting those forward. But then the demand management side, I think it's going to be critical because that allows us to hopefully mitigate the need for investment in some of those.
It'll, it'll put downward pressure. It will never mitigate. I'm just, it would be very important to manage.
But if this is, this is.
Downward pressure.
And this is, how do we kind of continue to bounce?
Downward pressure, agree.
And I think you're hearing, again, as, you know, some, some interest in, in pursuing that. I think the objective to your, to your concern, Phil. If we're going to form this committee is, that needs to be one of our kind of goals is we're actually helping to move faster versus.
I think that's.
You know, waiting for once a month and then at that point trying to get educated on.
Yeah, yeah, as Pam said, you know, waiting once a month and then we have all this, lots of other things. These, these are things we haven't seen. I mean, thirty years thing, this magnitude being done by our, our multi. And, you know, to have this and then with a packed agenda with the usual procurement things and a presentation, insurance and whatever else may come up, this, this, this deserves more attention and more frequency that the committee can, I think, provide. So with that, I believe the committee is so formed and the three can, you know, we'll check with Vivek, but the three can.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So we'll do that and, yeah, we'll, we'll sort that out tomorrow, but I guess the default could be that these, that the two are on it.
Phil, would you know from history, did the power rate, was that, did it include a cab member?
I don't think it did. I don't think it did. And it was only members of the commission, right?
Because I, I mean, the, the thinking, right or wrong, is we have expertise in three domains. You know, Bob with all his utility, practical, all the things we hear from Bob every meeting and. Vivek with the emerging technologies of what's going on in power supply, Pam with procurement and supply chain and all that. I mean, this is, this is a great group and I think would be the, the right three people to really. And leave to you guys, you know, how you, you feel you could best add value.
Yeah.
So.
One more administrative thing. Just want to be sure everyone commit to doing that time. So it would be one of their meeting hours. So it would be two meetings a month. And then probably someone from the committee would have to review the minutes, probably the chair, assuming the situation.
Works me done. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and if, if, if it turns out it's just a drag on the system and an anchor on, on. On Greg's leg, we will, we will rethink it, Phil.
Okay, yeah, because that's the thing. I mean, if two members don't seem to object, so. I have some reservations about forming another committee, but I'm willing to go forward and see how it works.
Yeah, no, there's pros and cons.
Yeah.
It just feels like we have more, we have bigger things than we've ever had. We, last meeting, we, we were halfway into the meeting, being asked to approve an additional one hundred and forty million. Dollars in capital spending to, to a budget.
Sure, but I've been to a budget.
Right, right.
Difference, I don't think that's still going to change the discussion when it comes to this. That's, I'm willing to try.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, very good. So onward and upward.
Back to the administrative.
Going back to, we're buying some, some, what are we buying?
Buying stuff.
We're buying some office equipment now, so we'll spend.
Oh, no.
Now are discussing.
Buying security.
Ergonomic.
Ergonomic. So, so this is. Please do that.
Okay, so move the board of commissioners on the recommendation of the general manager. And continued on the recommendation of the city advisory board, approve one hundred and thirty five thousand.
One hundred and sixty.
One, one sixty?
Yes.
I got one and thirty five.
It's, it's been changed.
I apologize, that was, yeah, because there was. For the month, for the map to work, it's got to be one sixty, but anyways, keep going. One sixty is the number, my apologies.
So, question is, that being, what's been published informed of us? As a public informed, it's going to be one sixty?
We're making the change in this meeting. You're doing a real time red line.
You know what? Maybe it's better if we, I don't know.
I think it's fine. I'm fine with it. Go ahead.
Concerned with the public perception, but I will go forward. Approve one hundred and sixty thousand increase to the, to two thousand twenty four capital budget. Is the six fifty the same or is that going to change too?
No, that's, that was, that was the same. The only change, no, six fifty is the right, it's the current.
Increase to the capital budget of six hundred and fifty thousand, project. Project number one nineteen on page thirty seven of the two thousand twenty four capital budget. For the purchase of security and access control and upgrades. I'm going to add the word for the department substation and I'm going to add the word, the Ash State Campus.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or can we just? Any questions? Yes or no? No, okay. All in favor? I, motion carries four oh.
I did.
Pam bid.
The next one, motion?
Please.
Okay, move that I F B two thousand twenty four dash two for office renovations. Including supporting work for other trains be awarded to Page Building Construction Company, Inc. For two hundred and fifty three thousand, two hundred and thirty four dollars pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter forty nine. Section forty four A through forty four H as amended as the lowest responsible. And eligible bidder on the recommendation of general manager.
Second, anybody?
Second.
You need explanation what's, what's being done?
Sure, yeah. So we sent out a bid. This is basically some interior office additions, office upgrades and, and removal of. Practitioners, the goal is to allow us to have a little more room in the building. I view it as an interim solution that'll continue, it's money we're spent to allow us to use the space that we have. We had five bidders, all responsive, all with no exceptions. The numbers ranged from five, two hundred and fifty three thousand to five hundred and thirty three thousand dollars to do it. It was a combination of electrical, H V A C, general contractors, those are the to, the total numbers that's in the package. The recommendation for a policy is to select Page Building Construction Company. As the, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder to the program.
So as, as I walked down the general, there's like an open area now. Is that where this is going to take place?
That's part of it. There's, there's, there's the hope, there's, there's that piece that while we'll come down and we'll reconfigure to add more cubicles there. There's construction that's been going back in the meter department. There's space that's going to be done in the engineering space and then also space done customer service engineering. So it's throughout the building.
Where's the commissioner's cube?
Uh, near the G M office.
Nothing?
You could.
Really? Yeah, thanks.
I assume you have drawings on all this already?
Oh, we, yeah, we have drawings. There we, there's drawing, yeah. So this is the, like the drawings were done, like this is literally, we're wearing the construction bitch. We did the drawing package last year.
All right, would have been nice to have the drawings in the, in the package, but you know, at this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, would have been nice to see that.
Good, good, good guidance.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead, I'm ready for the vote.
Okay, everybody, uh, ready for the vote, right? All in favor?
Yeah.
Hi, four oh, thank you.
Let's get the next one. I moved that I F B two thousand twenty four dash three. For video surveillance and access control system project. Be awarded to Signet Electrical Systems L L C, a center of seven hundred and eighty two thousand, eight hundred and eighty eight dollars. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter one forty nine, paragraphs forty, forty four A through forty four H as amended. As the lowest responsible, responsible bidder on the recommendation general manager.
Good, second.
Second.
You want to explain this one, Greg?
Yeah, this one's a little bit, a little bit more involved.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, the bottom line is, we have a. Control access and video system that needs to be replaced. The project was started back in twenty twenty. For a whole bunch of reasons, it's kept, it's progress was, was slow. We engaged back in twenty twenty. Anyways, bottom line, there's a lot of work done by a lot of people. One of the things that we ended up adding to the program back in summer of last year. Were a combination of video and audio systems at our substation. There are video and audio, audio systems out there. But the decision was made to not only have cameras facing inside the perimeter, but also cameras facing outside the perimeter. This is in response to a increasing trend of. Attacks on our physical, so our, our substations are not manned. So this is a way for us to inexpensively man and try and provide additional security to our, our substations, which are critical parts of our infrastructure. And then it's the basic keypads and door. You probably noticed that the, the door. Well, you probably didn't notice, but one of the, the door systems, as of today, is not working properly. So anyways, these are long overdue programs. At the end of the day, there were two people that bid on it, one that actually didn't qualify for it. So there was really only one. Responsive bidder. The dollar ticket item ended up being more expensive than we had expected and budgeted. It's a, it's an expense that we need to do from a security perspective, and we have one bidder that is capable and responsible.
Any other discussion you want to talk about?
No, sir, we're good.
Yes, sir. So it's a replacement for existing equipment and upgrade. A, a combination of multiple, because I know some of the stuff is fairly newer, that, that I thought some.
No, not our stuff.
No.
No, is it? So, so it's basically the replacement of everything. The, the only addition is that the substation, additional cameras that are facing outside the perimeter. An additional audio system to, so those, that's the, that's the incremental beside just replacing the existing stuff.
And what will be inside the building?
So we have carded access to a variety of office and the external doors. And then at the entrances, we also, we have keypads, so existing keypads will be the same existing keypads. The video system will be the same. I don't think we're adding any video cameras internally there at, at the door entrances. Yeah, at the doors like we have right now. It's pretty, pretty much a similar system with the exception of enhancements to the substations, which are not bad.
It does seem like a lot of money.
Yes, it does.
But.
You got to have video.
We, we, we need, we need a security, so.
And is it monitored video?
Yeah, we bought, we actually, it all feeds into our, we monitor, we feed into our operations. So. We, we, so we also did look last year at the idea of outsourcing the monitoring, et cetera. For cost reasons and security reasons, and since we already have a.
Have people here.
We have people here. We did look at that, though. We thought creatively in terms of how do you minimize the total cost. It's.
The only thing, I, I know we had talked a, a while ago. About this store access to this portion of the building for public access. When we talked about.
We'll be talking about that in a few moments.
Okay.
And, and, but that's.
Was that, is that combined with this effort?
I, I don't, we, uh, did we put a? No, I don't think we, we didn't combine, we did not make any provisions for making this a public space with this bid. We didn't. I'm not, I'm ninety percent sure we didn't.
Would it be possible to ask? That. An additional item, what it would take? If you're wiring, you're physically setting up.
There's a more basic, so. Yes, we could certainly ask. There's a more basic premise. So. We will do that with personnel for the limited times that we have external people in the building. We are literally, we are, as you can see behind us. That cube is actually occupied. The other one is going to be occupied as well. We're trying to be creative in terms of how we're using the space we have in this building. A recommendation. Is not to make any changes. Well, there's a couple of small changes we'll talk about from the policy. We will support town. Groups that want to come in here, but on a very limited basis, and we will charge them to have. I T and sec, and facilities and everybody else in here. It's not a self-serve kind of building. We literally look at this as being a secure facility. From the perspective of the reliability of our network and based on experience in the past, and we don't have space.
Experience of the past was, it wasn't, but it was.
It was open and we had, we had trouble.
It was closed.
What?
It was closed. It wasn't trouble. It was closed. It was closed off.
Well, we end up closing, I mean, before my time, it was off. Yeah, yeah. It was for, for reasons of not, for reasons of damage. And not being able to support it. We'll talk about that at the policy piece. Totally fine.
There was.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a sense of why we, we sent the bid to twenty five companies? We only got two responsive and only responses and only one was compliant. What, what made it?
Thank you.
Not attractive?
I, I don't have the, what made it not attractive?
Like why? Was it super specialized that we were asking for? Did we? Yeah, what, it's just surprising to me that we had twenty five that went out and only one that came back.
So we, we, we do have a higher level of standard because we're an electric utility. It is a combination of video in ti, inside and out and external, including the substations. It is not a home alarm system by any stretch of the imagination and is monitored in a control system. So there is a higher level of sophistication in the system. I don't know why the, and, and I, I will suggest that some of the ones, this was a bigger project than they were able to handle. And we also, because of the nature of security, we, at the recommendation of the advisor. A level of sophistication in terms of be able to, to, there's different levels in terms of this, these are all. D C M or state, because we are a municipal entity. We have to run through the state regulatory perspective, and so they have different levels of security capabilities. So. This one's not the highest, but it's a higher one, given the nature of the business. So we're, we are, we did have more stringent pieces and it's a more complicated system. Why, why five didn't out of that present? I don't know. There's a, there's a, there is a, I did, I did happen to see an article in today's, nothing, it happened to be on my desk today. But it was, it was about, uh, uh, security. Anyways, it was the security systems and the lead article was, how come we can't recruit more people to, to be in this industry? And then the article behind it was in, in building drones as opposed to fixed cameras anyways. So I, I don't have the answer to your question, but like other industries, I think that's challenging to have people actually do the work.
I wonder if there's opportunity for us as we. Look at situations like this, where we go out to a large number and we get essentially only one option. Soul source option, just to. I don't know if it's a justification or if it's an assessment of what led this, or if it's an interview with a couple of the key vendors we thought we were going to respond. Just what, you know, just so we can learn if it was truly very unique, if it was a industry.
And what could we, what could we do better next time?
Yeah, um, just, just to help us feel confident that the, the, the amount that we're being asked for here is. Because it is over the budget, I know we allocated it in the prior motion, but. That it is a competitive price.
I think the question is a good enough one that, why don't, why don't we, since we're going to meet in two weeks?
No, what? I'm sorry, please go ahead. We've, we've kicked this down the road for four years. We have systems that aren't working. I'm sorry, forgive me.
No, it's okay. No, I mean, it's, it's a legitimate point, but I mean, I actually, I have to say, I hadn't read the part where there was, it was sent to twenty five. And we have a sole source bid for three quarters of a million dollars for a security system. You know, I, I, hearing that, I'm, I'm, you know, what do we do up here, you know, but.
But it, it went to the state bidding.
Yeah, it went through a process.
It, it went to the state.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't only go to one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we.
Did everything right.
Process was right. It was, to me, it's, the question is just what.
We do differently next time.
Yeah, uh, exactly. I, I think if. If this was office chairs, maybe we would wait. This clearly is a business need.
Just running, just, just floating the idea of a question, two weeks, but if you're all ready to go, fine.
It is a common problem, unfortunately. We don't have enough bidders on many of the bids.
Yeah, but it has come up. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need a form, more formalized process to learn from why and, and determine if we need to make some changes in our, even if it meets regulation. We just want to get more, we want to be competitive and we want to.
Yes, we could.
Manage every dollar.
Make it easier to do business with us.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're comfortable voting, okay, you are, okay. Then we've had a motion, a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, we have a four oh vote approving that motion.
With, with the ask?
With the ask.
An additional. Additional line item. On top, not to interfere with the bid. That print might be a separate bid to put, to isolate this area as, as public use. Additional, what, tell me, what, tell me.
I have reported the action item. I will duly respond back.
Maybe they can throw it in.
For free.
Yeah, maybe.
Yes.
We will ask the question. We're, we're going to negotiate.
Well, you know, security.
Julie requested.
Security systems, we have cameras in the building where I live in, you know, and we're, we're talking about, we have to cover the doors and one of the hallways. We're talking about having them the outside.
Yeah.
Because we're getting people who circle the building, beeping their horn. Is that you?
Might have been, yeah. I was looking, looking for you.
Beeping their horn in the middle of the night, you know? You know, we like to catch them.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, we did that. Okay.
Ready for the next one?
We are.
And move that R F Q two thousand twenty four dash twenty four for one electric vehicle D C fast charger. B C F C, be awarded to Voltrac LLC in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and twenty seven dollars. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter thirty B, second paragraph twenty two, as the lowest responsible bidder on the recommendation of general manager.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Where's this going to go?
It's going to go, so it's going to, it's going to go next to station one. And that'll be the D C fast charger to power the electric vehicles that we're adding to our fleet. So it's basically for our internal use.
Station one is which, which?
It's the middle building. Like, it's going to be, it's going to be for our trucks.
Our trucks.
It's it's an internal infrastructure build. Voltrex. So this is this is the same unit that we installed at the library. It that we bid or that bid that we awarded was two years ago. Um it was ninety eight thousand dollars, so the incremental so. It's a lot of money, but it um unlike most of other things, the incremental price is not significant relative to what it was back on the bid.
So this won't be open to the public?
This will not be open to the public. We'll end up using this one.
And you need to have a fast charger. You can't charge overnight with a level two.
No. And the reason being is that um this is some discussion we've had before in terms of how we. Yep, and that we do a lot of traveling. Um yeah, so and this this is so. This is part of our learning process, and again, we're we're not, you know, we're not electrifying the whole fleet. We're trying to figure out like how it really works in terms of our operations, so.
How many electric vehicles you got now?
Uh we have the Bolt right now. And and then we're taking delivery of two lightnings, the one that will so one will be uh line. Uh assistant general line foreman.
Yeah.
And the other one will be either grid assets or facilities.
Well, then why do you need this if it's just for a couple of pickup trucks?
Because we won't be it. The use case won't work where we have to charge them overnight. We we need we literally need to be able to charge these in less than an hour. If we're gonna if we're gonna make the transition to electric vehicles away from gas, we have to learn how to do it. And we have to get started. It's a big ticket item. I get it, but it's like these are pretty bold. This like this is not a throwaway device. This isn't.
Level one, level two, level three, right?
This is level three.
Everything you see out pretty much in most places is a a.
Yeah, no, I know.
Fast charger now the level twos are are their whole use, two two forty home use and and.
Well, we and we have out front like.
Yeah, they have. Yeah, they have.
We have and that's and and those are the ones we've installed, and then we've got one DC fast.
I think commercial was.
Yeah, it's DC fast.
So you're you're saying you're gonna have many more electric vehicles than the two pickup trucks?
Eventually, yeah. We're we're gonna try it, see how it works, and then we will we'll make an internal decision in terms of, you know, what's the appropriate level of internal electrification? But this is partially for us to, you know. We're trying to encourage electrification. We're trying to be responsive to the state mandate. And we need to get ready, so we can't not do anything, so.
If if it turns out you don't use many electric vehicles, will you have the option of making this something you could charge for?
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Yeah, yeah, we can. We can put it out in the public site, or we can move it to the front. Absolutely.
I would feel better knowing that this could be used.
It it.
Subject to.
Yeah, it 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 so it it as it it doesn't care. I mean, it's a. It's a. Solid bulletproof piece of equipment, no. No crap. Yeah, right. I mean, li- literally, it's um it's designed for heavy duty use. I mean, well, it's a DC fast charger. So yes, if we just if we determine in two years that electrification of our trucks isn't working and we don't and we want to put it up in front of the building or put it somewhere else, easily done. Now, we've got to do site prep for it, et cetera, but the unit itself, it's got a long life. These are these. This is the. This is an A V B piece of equipment. It's. Good quality stuff. And it's consistent with the one we already have. Which was also vetted by the. State. That's another topic. It's not crazy.
Why not just install it out front to begin with?
We're gonna put it. We're gonna put a bi-directional DC fast charger up front as well. We could do it. We could turn it into revenue generating.
You know, two fast chargers then.
Well, the other one will be a a a smaller version of it and one quarter of the price.
Then you get into vendor management, right? You have a whole. It's a whole another level of. How you sell it, how you purchase it, you're buying your own, you know, you it. It's not just a. Plugin in using power, but right now it's commercially.
Oh, in terms of being able to charge people.
Big charge people. Yeah, and it's that. Yeah, you have a whole management system that gets associated with it. It just goes there, you plug in, you charge. You're done. It's just I don't I don't know. You want to introduce that? For.
Not right now, but I think back to today's point, having the option like if if we find that we don't use it very much or it's not you not earning its keep, then we'll reevaluate it. But we need to put. This is part of the electrification piece.
How will we know that it's sort of gets keep out what the utilization is? Does it have a self-recording?
Oh, we can track it. We can track everything on it, but the question, you know. The real question is going to be um is how well did the electric vehicles work for us in our service territory? And again, we're a little bit different than the larger utilities and that we're fifty one square miles. Uh our average vehicles um are roughly seven thousand miles a year, so it's a very different use case. Than us trying to cover from here to New York State or New Hampshire or whatever. So we're trying to learn, but. We're gonna learn by doing, and we're gonna we're gonna set the example. So we have one bolt. Um there's there's uh five of us right now that drive electric vehicles um as well, and we've learned a lot. Um we will. We will bring to you a DC fast charger rate because we have a. We have a customer that wants to. We have two customers actually, but one that's um hot to trot to put um DC fast chargers at one of our locations. Up in Wilmington, um so we'll walk you and we are finishing that rate stuff, which you guys have to approve. We'll bring that to you in the May meeting. As well, but it's. Let's recast and so again, we are trying to be responsive to the state requirements, and we are. We are trying to learn as we go.
Ready for a vote? On favor?
Why run electric vehicles? I noticed that the electric vehicle seems to be losing momentum these days. What I can see. Pushed to electric vehicles seem to be losing momentum. I mean, is it something we need? Can we do anything on that?
So do you mean in our territory?
I look I look at things like, you know. The the value of a company like ChargePoint, which makes these things, is now two dollars a share. You know, or it was we used to be ten. You know, another company, uh. Uh the company out of Florida, they were ten dollars a share. They're now down to one dollar and fifty cents, so I'm wondering. And I'm reading the newspaper that there's somebody who says, you know, electric vehicles have been pushed too far, too fa- too soon and too fast.
He will see a lot of people write a lot of things about them.
Yeah.
And at the end of the day. The state is the one that's mandating the adoption of E Vs. Our goal is to make it as easy as possible. Um our experience, our personal experience, depending upon your use case, is that E Vs are less expensive to operate. Than traditional gas, and I'll speak from personal experience. The 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 feedback, you're seeing more feedback in terms of um this is the the adoption of a new industry. The automobile industry is going undergoing a massive change. But E Vs are going to become the dominant. This is this is not me speaking. This is public speaking that. That in the next three, four, five, six years, there'll be a dominant. People are gonna vote with their pocketbooks at the end of the day, and the pocketbooks are gonna be E V is the least expensive way to go. And so is it going as fast? Was there a lot of hype? Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um but you know, the data point that we picked up, again, we do a lot of, you know, in the I R D team, we uh we'll talk a little about very briefly, but you know. We have interns and co-ops in here um partially to help them learn, partially for us to get value, partially for for us to get um. New people excited about joining the the electric utility space. Um they do a lot of research like this. Um but the data that we have right now is that um in twenty twenty three from twenty twenty two, while it's not thirty five percent. The E V market grew in the United States at seventeen percent. That's a pretty still pretty big. It's not like it may not not be going to twenty five percent, but it's still growing. So again, we're we want to make it as easy as possible for customers in our territory to own E Vs. We're an electric business. We want to sell electricity. It's good for all of our rate payers. The more we sell, again, balancing the time, the actual the time shifting, so. You're gonna see more stuff on on vehicle to grid and um. You know, rates for times, et cetera, but we want the load. So that's the big picture, and we can do, you know, a market study in the August, no, I don't know of August, but maybe September. August sometime. I mean, that'd be a good feedback for one of the interns anyway, so.
Toyota Toyota went to the hybrid one.
Yes, they did.
So. To Phil's point, you market's gonna dictate which way we go.
It certainly is.
You know, and then there's a lot of concerns about where the batteries come from, raw materials, how they're produced, right? That's a lot of.
Exactly right.
Yep, so it's it's.
There's a lot of.
A lot of supply chain issues with the.
There's a lot of people try, you know, there's a lot of proponents that want to succeed and a lot of people that don't. Um at the end of the day, our goal, our goal is to be able and ready. Um again. Yeah, so. We're we are not in the car business. Right? And we are not in the charging, you know, we we will buy chargers and, you know, our goal, whether we're charged, whether we're selling electricity through a home meter or a charger at the home or public charger, we're neutral.
The doors lock at eight.
Is that a?
Security system is gonna. These door eight thirty. Let's just move on. Okay. Um. So what are we doing? Item nine?
Up to nine.
Yeah, nine. Okay. I'm looking at you.
Four years, four years, but waiting for this one. Big stock.
And you have five minutes, apparently.
Okay, property use. So we spoke back in December. Um you asked us to um. Consider. Opening the building up. Um we bet. Yeah, if you want to bring that up, that's fine. Okay. So same thing. So a- as you guys know, um you know, every three years, we're supposed to review all the policies. This one we reviewed um last fall. Um I committed to reviewing it again in April. Um we make a we made a few small changes to it. At the end of the day, um we are not closing the building. But we want to make it available to town or town boards or town committees. Um in our service territory, so that includes Wilmington and North Reading and Lynnfield Center, not just Reading. Whether it's the indoor facility or outdoor facility, it'll be very limited in terms of what we do. Um but we also, um again, because we need, because we serve a variety of towns, and the goal for us is to provide electricity. And not and not be intended to be a a public building. The support cost, we will, you know, as appropriate, if there are support costs associated with facility or I T personnel. We will before we have a form, we have a process already in place, um so we'll follow that process process. Um the only other two changes we made to it. So this is not, you can see in the red line here, very small changes from what we did back in policy thirteen. Now, we made some small changes to um item three, drugs and alcohol beverages prohibited, smoking prohibited. Um and then we also additional restrictions, um you know, is deemed necessary for safety, system reliability, because that's part of our our key mission. Anyway, so those are the changes we made. Um we're not closed, but we are not promoting, to be blunt. And we ask, we will look at the, we made the commitment on the previous thing. We will look at. Different configurations so that this building can come and go. If appropriate and as needed. Back to you. The next one's more important. I mean, they're all important, but. Questions?
I I. You know, again, like I think the the goal would be understanding that this cube's in here right now. And there's gonna be a timeline. Hopefully, they'll be removed at some point. At at some.
At some point.
Yeah.
At some point, at some point.
Uh you know, if someone wants to use the room, I just don't want to feel like that that this room. Is closed. Right? And there's there's some wording in there that makes it feel. Open. I'm not looking to put out for rent sign out in front of the building, but at the same time, if someone wants to use the space. Well, it it is smaller, but. You know, there's a mechanism to do it. And someone asks, I that that that's all I was looking for. I just didn't want to hear the word no.
It's not no.
It's not no.
Are you happy with this?
Yeah, okay.
With as presented?
As presented.
Okay. Then if you're happy with it, I'm happy with it.
Yeah.
Um. I I actually, I'm I'm more in the favor of like, why don't we let this be used, but I get it about NERC and all that, so. Um. So. I mean, it's a great space and the town needs space and.
Yep.
It's underutilized, except by us. Well, no, it's not underutilized. It's fully utilized. When I said underutilized, what I meant to say was fully utilized.
Continue.
Okay, did we already motion a second or not?
No. Move the R M L D board measures approved policy thirteen. Facility proper use revision eight, as presented by recommendation general manager.
Second.
Okay, you want a favor? All right, that passes. Okay, we got nice.
Okay, policy nineteen. So we talked about this uh back in January and February when we're talking about policy thirty.
Yep.
Um what we concluded and what we have successfully done, we committed to at the April meeting. Um take the responsibility of the Board of Commissioners, that's you. And that's opposed to being spread across thirty one, now thirty two different policies to combine it all into one. So that was what you have in front of you. Um. Uh so we we literally stripped it out of out of all of the other policies um and put it into one location. Um there's a there's not a straight red line because there's a lot of moves.
Okay, let's just consolidating. There's no changes.
Well, there's not. So so there's a table of changes. Um so. There were. There were several. You know. No politically charged change, but there are, but we we went through with with counsel.
Okay.
Terms of of trying to update all of different pieces, but there's literally.
Oh, I see.
Sixteen pages of changes.
Can I suggest something?
Yeah, sure.
Because the door is closed in fourteen minutes that. Was we're doing a meeting in two weeks. I would like a chance to look at this more carefully. Plus, we did something last meeting where we we had a policy about who can be chaired, when. I don't know if that's been reflected here. Um as far as what year, election years, was that dealt with in this?
Yeah.
It was. It was. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think I mean, you could digest a little bit. I mean, there's a lot here.
There is. I I I guess I this is so much.
Yeah.
Why don't we just do this at this quick meeting? We're doing it in two weeks.
Okay.
All right, then we can read it, sleep on it.
Plenty to. Yeah, there's there's a lot of meat here.
I read it all in analog.
Okay.
I don't. I didn't even blink.
Didn't even.
Okay.
Meaning you didn't read it?
I didn't read it.
I have to admit, although I am. Technically the chair, I did not read every word of it. Most of it. So I just think.
Postpone to next week.
Let's postpone it to next week.
Okay.
All right, policy thirty two.
Um policy thirty two um. So we actually strip in terms of restructuring policy nineteen.
Yep.
We basically took a lot of items um out of it and made them the public comment policy.
Yep.
Um. You know, that one that that one should be non. That's that's pretty black and white. It's pretty simple, pretty clean.
On just I just trying to wrap, but on on the nineteen, there's a table toward the end.
Of all the red lines.
And all the and all the changes are detailed.
Yep.
So just to point that out.
Yep.
Thank you, Phil.
Yeah.
Sixteen pages of.
Sixteen pages.
All the more reason we can do this offline now.
So just so so back to nineteen, the structure, quick summary page, and then um the the clean copy. And then instead of a red line copy, because it would have been all red line, the table was basically a way to look at. What the changes were. So take so. Anyways, read. You should read the clean copy because it'll be it like. We all learn things when we read it because again, and the intention was to make it clear in one location because there's a lot of stuff there. So maybe just, okay, policy thirty two. Policy thirty two is one page. It's pretty straightforward. Well, page and a half. Um. But we basically so we're trying to simplify and streamline the number of policies, but in this case. Um. It seemed more clear because it was a very specific standalone piece to basically put public pub public comment policy as its own. We basically stripped stuff out of the other policies and put it in one place. Um. I don't think there's anything new. In terms of the content, anything new that we added to a public comment. Oh, right.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
That's a you can. That's a law that's passed?
No.
For okay, for decision.
Yeah.
It's item five.
But you can but you can have a a. Basic policy place that says, no, you cannot.
Well, no.
Is that what they're saying?
No, just to.
Because.
Let me let me read item five for you.
Yeah, read item five, yeah.
So members of the public are encouraged to keep their comments respectful despite any differences of opinion on the matters discussed. However. The board cannot demand that persons attending meetings or participating in public comment be civil to one another, the R M L D, or the members of the board.
But then item six, disrupt the conduct in engaging another unprotected speech, including but not limited to. Are you setting?
Maybe may be grounds for the chair to curtail.
Read read seven, read seven.
Okay. What's the what's with the eleven fifteen? Why was eleven fifteen P M?
Yeah. No filibustering.
Again, I hate to do this again, but I would like to just read this and sleep on it before we vote on it. Phil, I know you're I know you're upset. I know, but.
It's yeah, a question. Is this? In line with what other boards are doing or are we leading? Okay. Okay.
I mean, if it gets disrupt, you've got seven, you issue one warning, continues, then you cut them off. So.
So.
This is not a confrontational, this is not, there's nothing.
Yeah, but it's, it's the, how you deal with confrontation.
Right, this is, this is something, this is, this is intended to give the board the tools to manage the meetings if they get unruly. I mean, literally, that's what it's designed to do.
Look at this crap.
Hey, we have so many.
I guess my question is, what's, what's the difference between, we can't tell you to be civil, but we can tell you not to be disruptive? What's the difference between, like, where's that line?
You can't control the words that come out of the mouth, but we can tell you that your time is up. Right?
And disruptive would be, sorry, I talked over you, that's probably disruptive. Okay.
Hopefully, they do this uptown.
This was preemptive. Um, so looking at this. I think it's great. There are some tweaks I can see making, like, we're saying categorically that people can't speak a second time. I mean, I, to me, it's like, if we talked and then we had one speaker and, and she wanted to say something else. I, I wouldn't, it wouldn't bother me. So I can see why it's in there, but to say categorically, you can't speak a second time. And this eleven fifteen, there's some things I just want to think about a little bit. And again, I would like to just have the opportunity to.
Policy for the board.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it's meant to give you tools, so.
We don't have a crisis on this, let's, I'd like this in two weeks.
And the reason it came about, just so you know, is that. It, it came out of the context of making the revisions in nineteen. So instead of leaving it buried in there, we've got to be appropriate. So you want, you want to just.
Yeah, I just want to do this in two weeks. I want to read it carefully. There might be a couple tweaks we'd make. I, I personally don't care if somebody speaks a second time, things like that.
Yeah.
Uh, so, the public comment policy takes the place basically of the code of conduct. And in nineteen, we also said that you don't have to be the code of conduct anymore before the meeting.
Okay. Good, cause I didn't this time.
Oh, well, that is why, yeah.
Um. Anyway. So.
But this is actually, but just from Wilmington.
Yeah, you make, you make a good point on the.
Yeah.
You made a good point.
Yeah, okay.
You made a good point about the second time, maybe you should say that.
Yeah.
Once the speakers often, you know, in order to speak a second time, we'll be, we'll be at the discretion.
Right, things like that. So I just want to have a chance to read it, let it bake.
Let, let's make that a point to the chair to go a second time.
Phil and I are in harmony on this, which is good.
It's scary.
It is scary. It happens. Like everyone's, it all happens.
Okay. So much for the twenty minute.
Like the.
We got nine, nine left. We have nine left. Okay, so we're gonna do nineteen. Nine minutes. We're gonna waive the general manager's portion. Stupid, I'm just kidding, go ahead.
I'll do it in three minutes. I'll, no, really, I'll go fast.
Uh, I got a draft kink bet going right now, three minutes.
Okay. Okay. So we talked about, we talked about this before, but we're actually moving forward in terms of, we're probably gonna call the marketing, marketing outreach. But, a- a- again, the goal is education. There's, we talked before, a lot of education to do for our external people. Um, we had six interns and co-ops last year, twenty twenty-three, we're gonna do um another six this year. Um, the goal is for them to learn, contribute to the organization, and also spread the word that. Electric industry is exciting and as is RMLD. Uh, the program's been very good. We've got some returning students. Um, that next bullet down, data load center. So we, you, you, we put together a, um, we, we have. Been open and proactive in terms of attracting additional load to our territory. Um, data centers are an interesting load. Um, we think our, our, what we offer in terms of reliability, low cost, and non-carbon, as well as geography, is gonna be attractive, so we're gonna chase that. See if we get some additional load. Um. Uh, audits wrapping up, twenty twenty-three audits wrapping up, presentation in May, um, nothing significant. Um, the other element is, you know, we've been doing a little bit of exploration with AI in our utility. Um, we're trying to do that thoughtfully and with caution. Um, but we think there's probably a role over time for AI to be part of our, our. Process and platform. Um, other quick pieces, uh, infrastructure. Um, the AMI bid, so four, so four responses, we have four responses for this uh significant project that came in, it's not gonna be a one bit piece. Um, bid analysis will be uh due or finished uh in June. Uh, we'll come back to you in either July or September to do the award. Um, there's a lot of customer outreach. Um, this is smart meter stuff, it's gonna come back up again. Um, so again, this is, this, this, this communication piece comes up over and over again, and all sorts of pieces. Um, we anticipate meter replacement starting in twenty twenty-five and hopefully complete by twenty twenty-six, but potentially twenty twenty-seven to pay upon, we've got a couple options in terms of how we do that. Um. That, as you remember, AMI is a prerequisite to more TOU, a time of use rates, we've talked about this several times. Um, but as you know, we're also implementing MDM, and MDM might be an, an interim step for more TOU, but that's coming. Um, we, you guys know, based on the capital projects that we've been doing over the past couple of years, um. You know, we continue, we've moved out of maintenance mode to build mode to accommodate the load growth, but we will present uh probably in the July meeting. An update in terms of what the network looks like um in twenty fifty, it'll be, it, it, we'll give you a high level of view, but the engineering team is working aggressively on that. Next bullet, um RP three, we talked about this a couple of years back before, well, not quite before my time, but before my role here. Um, we were at the platinum level. We actually are one of three MLPs that made it to the diamond level. Um, that's ninety-eight out of a hundred points. Um, it's part of APPA. Um, the evaluation criteria is reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. Um, this is a nice award to have. There's also a book that, there's an article that talks about system savings, do you actually read the last article? That's a, that's a marketing piece for Caterpillar. Um. But it's a nice write-up. Um, but the point being is that, that uh again, we have a good reputation in the industry and we're trying to, to talk about it. The last piece is, um, you guys know from the twenty-year agreement. Um, we have been, you know, for, since nineteen ninety-two, we have got an above-the-line payment that we do to all four towns. Um, there's been a question with Wilmington in terms of, of uh our three twenty-six, um Ballard Vale, so we are. Um, trying to be very open-minded, but we have to resolve that as we continue to acquire more land in other territories, or other municipalities besides. So anyways, that's in process, I'll give you more update. That was part of my intermediate updates, I think, back in December, um, but that's in process. Any questions? There's a lot there, like that three minutes.
It was good, it was four, but that's all right.
Four minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, let, so purchasing more land.
Absolutely.
And so the detriment is without depreciation. Is, is that what they're saying? You know, land is included in the calculation price, so. Um. When you buy land, that's, they're gonna hit you on. Your, 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 your payment, how long is that gonna last? A single year or is it continuous?
Continuous.
Continuous.
So, so. So we currently pay a pilot, we pay a pilot payment, which is part of the twenty-year agreement on net plant.
Right.
So it's all plant depreciation. In the case of land, all land that we own. It is, it is recorded at whatever the payment price, not, not the appraised value, but whatever we paid for it. And that continues. As long as the twenty-year agreement is in place. Now.
So, that, that, that's significant dollars.
Uh, it, it's, it's.
Well, but.
It's not, it. It's the reality, so. Currently? Uh. So I'll walk you through more analysis on it.
No, no, it's, it's something, it's something to think about, how you pur, how you purchase it. Do you purchase that land, or do we, or do we lease it?
Um. I hear you, we wanna, so. I hear you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just, just thought.
Yeah, it, it's, it's, in terms of dollars, it's not a significant piece of our cost structure, but it's important dollars to each of the town, the whole pilot payments. So that's part of a, you know. It's that land right now and, and land going forward will not be a big part of our capital assets, our net plant. It's gonna be a small portion, and then it's two percent on that. So at the end of the day, the numbers are not significant. But we have to address the issue.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I guess what I'm saying to you, Bob, is that it's, I don't think we should change our strategy in terms of what we're trying to do. Um, but we need to make sure that everybody is on the same page.
Okay.
And, and. And so there's just, there's some clarification that we need to do with the town of Wilmington, which lost that in place everywhere else.
Fair, fair point, thank you for.
Yeah, that's good, good question. Okay. Five minutes.
Very good. Um. And we have good news. Uh, item twelve. So. This is about where we post our meeting notices and when we have to post, and as you know, it was a forty-eight hour rule. And we've, but yet, because we've had to post through the town of Reading, it can take, it, it sometimes makes. Six days because we have to do it on the Thursday before the Wednesday meeting, because of, if there's a Friday closing and the Monday holiday. So I checked with the AG's office, and there's a way to do it where we can uh post on the Reading website. And then.
What's on the RMLD website?
Excuse me, the RMLD website. If, if we vote to say we, we would like to do so as a board. Then the towns can cross-post on their websites. That means we can do it on the Monday before the Wednesday meeting, instead of for earlier days.
If, if needed, if we have a short-term meeting, because right, right now, it's, if anybody wanted to know.
Yeah, it's, it's an, and this is an option.
Yeah, it just means, it just means by taking this vote, we say that the posting on the RMLD website shall be the posting. And that, and then that gets told to the AG's office that this is the official place where it's posted on the RMLD website, and then the towns can simply cross-post.
Well, so my recommendation is that. That we actually have a link on the.
It's required.
The ticket, so you, people who can, who are currently going to the town website to find.
It'll hop link over to, yeah.
Go, it'll click the link, it'll page them over to the RMLD website.
And that, that's, that's what the word, and provide directions to the RMLD website. So it, it will be, there will always be that, it says, the way the language is from the AG. It talks about directions too, but it will be the equivalent of a.
That's the be a link, yeah.
It will be a link.
Okay.
So we have to make sure the IT guys are happy.
It goes to the home, it goes not to the RMLD homepage, to the page.
To the page, exactly, to the, and, and the benefits is, okay, we'd like to always have an agenda posted a week ahead, but. When there's things that are fast-moving or they are continuing to be, and there's so much going on that having the flexibility to, to meet the forty-eight hours without having it to be six days. All the time is, is useful. That's.
So will we still be posting by the time already?
Yeah, well, they'll just, where they, where they post now, it will just link over to the RMLD website. But we, to meet the law, we, we don't have to post it six days ahead.
Instead of me sending the agenda to each town, um, parking them, stamping it, and then posting it, and then me posting it, I would just post it, and they would just point to it.
It always points to it. It's also less work for all of them.
If their link never changes.
Correctly, always goes, yeah.
I still like to see us post with the town of Reading.
Well, we will, I mean, that.
But you know, to do it on a Monday, you know, I, I don't, I don't like that idea quite fruit, I'd rather do it on the following Thursday, so there's plenty of notice.
Well, we, we can still strive for that, but.
Well, I, not strive, but I'd like to see us do it.
Okay.
Well.
I think it's part of transparency.
Well, then you can vote against it and, and say that we always have to do it six days in advance. Um, so can somebody read the motion?
Uh, I can do that. Move to the board of commissioners in recognition that RMLD is defined as a regional public body under nine forty CMR twenty-nine dot zero zero. And the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, MGLC thirty A. Post meeting notices and associated documents on the RMLD website and arrange for the websites of the four towns in the RMLD service territory. To provide directions to the RMLD website for such notices effective May first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
I, I guess my only suggested edit to this, it's um to include a live link, so be after directions, comma, to include a live link.
We, we literally took this from the AG office.
Oh, okay.
This is AG.
Trying to make sure it's not like, please go find it at the RMLD website.
No, no, no. I mean, we're, we're gonna make it as easy as possible, but we literally took this language.
I would accept Pam's uh language just to say link uh as of, instead of directions, like to provide a.
But we put link behind in parentheses.
Yeah.
Cause I, I want to, when you go back to the, because we're. You're the part of the traffic, this is their language. I just want to make sure they recognize their language.
Yep.
We put link in parentheses afterwards, if that's, I'm happy with that.
And this is not an unusual thing to do, and um, again. We may need to have this kind of flexibility that. You know, that it allows. And I think it's pretty common for the other eight, uh, other public bodies to post forty-eight hours, not six days ahead. I may be wrong.
We'll do as early as we possibly can.
We will.
The, the pushing agenda is pretty easy, it's getting the documents out, but we, I think we've been really disciplined, right? In terms of getting the documents out earlier.
Yeah.
Not only for you, but also for the citizens advisory board. So, I mean, we got this out Friday for a Wednesday meeting. Uh, so we, we, we'll try and be as early as we can, but given the pace of stuff, it's not gonna be two weeks ahead of time, but it'll be, we want to give you the weekend to look at stuff. That's all.
We have a concern with the town websites that they can link directly to it, but I don't see why they wouldn't be able to. And once we vote to go this way, we can't go back to the other way unless we vote again.
Sure. Well, that's the, the web works, that links work from website to website, that's how it works. So there's not, it's not gonna be. There's not gonna be a technical reason that they can. Okay. We have a motion in a second.
Mm-hmm.
What, Bob?
No, no, I just, I seconded, I don't interfere with that.
Then are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Right.
And.
This casino votes present.
Why don't you just vote no?
Vote present.
Okay. Phil Pacino is present at the meeting. Okay.
Don't mock me, don't mock me, don't mock me.
So Phil Pacino's present and three are in favor. Okay.
Scheduling.
All right, scheduling. All right, so. We want, we need, we want to have this meeting in a couple of weeks, so let's find a time when we can do it.
Would you guys like to do it next Thursday, the twenty-fifth?
That would be fine with me.
Uh, that is a meeting?
Oh. Yeah, you're right, sorry.
It's Tuesday the twenty-fourth.
Hi. I cannot.
How about really the following? Following.
Following Wednesday.
Thirty. Or the seventh.
Uh, it would be Monday, the twenty-ninth, if it was.
Yeah, so you could do, uh, choose.
It'll be, it'll be two topics on regular, but executive. We'll keep it short, but it will be executive.
So what do we decide?
If it's, the thirtieth or the seventh, your choice.
Is, uh, our executive session is Zoom allowed or?
We could do the zone.
Yes.
Are we doing the first or the seventh?
Your choice.
Sorry, it's the thirtieth or the seventh.
The thirtieth.
The thirtieth. Both Tuesdays.
What, what time on the thirtieth?
Six thirty? Seven?
Seven?
Seven would be.
Seven? Seven work?
Okay.
On which date, thirtieth?
No matter what.
Uh, wait, uh, yeah, um, on Zoom. On the thirtieth.
Yeah, thirtieth, Zoom at seven.
Thirtieth, I'm okay. Thirtieth at seven it is.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, then we have the other two, May and June.
So the only proposed change from the ones you guys have talked about already is Thursday, June twentieth, and that's just a week earlier than what we originally proposed.
Those are fine with me, anybody? For the May twenty-third and June twentieth?
Okay. Uh, yeah, May twenty-third is already on calendar. June three, what's the other one, June twentieth?
June twentieth.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. It's fine.
Okay. Um. Just see if you have coverage. And then it's done. Okay, okay, C A B, are we okay with the C A B coverage as written here?
Um, that's me.
Uh.
Yeah, you're covering tomorrow.
Actually.
Yeah, you get tomorrow night, and I got.
I could do it remotely though. We'll be in a car, can I do it remotely?
Uh, what time is the meeting?
Six thirty?
Six thirty here.
Your choice, I mean, we could do it. Your choice, I mean, we could do it. Okay. Unless you want to switch it. You want to switch, Pam?
I would also be Zoom.
I can, oh, I'm on, and I'm, I'm up, so I'll do. We'll figure, we'll figure. Okay.